County Planning Commission. And, once again, my introductory comments, make, please make sure your cellphones are all off. Action taken tonight will be effective within five days. And, a written appeal may be filed by Tuesday, September 5th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, September 26th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the county commission are held in the same room. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the July 24th meeting are included on the consent agenda. And then, I will read through each item on the consent agenda. And, originally, I guess, first of all, I'll ask if there are any comments from, from the county planning and zoning for have, to have any items pulled. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Okay. Then, I'll read each item, and if you have any opposition to the item being presented, please raise your hand, and we will move it to the regular agenda. The first item is Conditional Use Permit 17-52 to transfer one building eligibility from the northeast quarter to Section 27, tract 101. The petitioner is Reagan Beauchamp. Property owner is Gerald Har. Any objectives? And I think I did mention that it will include the minutes from the last meeting. Then, the third item is Conditional Use Permit 17-53 to make available two building eligibilities on the property described as the west one-half northwest quarter. The petitioner is David Dannen, and he is also the property owner. Item four, Conditional Use Permit 17-56 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building, requesting 2,600 square feet. The petitioner is Nathan Opitz, and the location is 25508 Helen Trail.
Got a hand up in the back.
Okay. Thank you. Item number five, Conditional Use Permit 17-57 to allow our contractor shop, repair and taxidermy shop, and outdoor storage on the property legally described as, it's the northwest quarter southwest, lying south of Highway 38.
Madam Chair, they already got their hands up.
Okay, we got hands up. Thank you. I won't read anymore. Item six, Conditional Use Permit 17-58 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building. This is requesting 1,680 square feet in Inger Brethson's addition, and the petitioner is Chris Trudeau. Any questions on that? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved, and this includes item one, the approval of minutes. Item two, conditional use for transferring building eligibilities. Item three is transfer of building eligibility. We will move item four and five to the regular agenda, and it includes item number six, Conditional Use Permit 17-58. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
Move to. Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. The consent agenda has been approved. We will move on to the agenda item number, starting with item number four, Conditional Use Permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of building. And, the petitioner is Nathan Opitz, oh, I'm sorry. Get ahead of myself. We'll start with you, David.
Good evening, Planning Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. As you mentioned, item number four, Conditional Use Permit 17-56 is to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area. As the zoning ordinance states, that in a subdivision of more than four platted lots, the, a Conditional Use Permit application is required to exceed the total area of 1,200 square feet. And the request is 2,624 square feet. And, this property is located roughly about five miles north of Sioux Falls at 25508 Helen Trail. It's about 300 feet south of 255th Street. The proposed building size, as you can see on the map there, is outlined in red, just the east side of Helen Trail there. Skipping forward to the site plan, as you can see, the, the building as the petitioner has proposed would include a 32 by 32-foot building, as you can see on the north side of the image there. And, a, as well as an additional 40 by 40, which is that box to the south, or the bottom part of that image. The petitioner also included a concept plant, or, actually, getting ahead of myself there for a second. Actually, go through some of the sizes that we, this is an accessory building sizes map that we got and analyzed. The properties are in the immediate vicinity, as well as the surrounding area, with different lot sizes that, this property is on five, or roughly a five-acre parcel, so similar lot sizes. And, a lot of the properties in the vicinity have a range of about 1,200 square feet to 4,560 square feet. And this is all within about a half-mile distance, for your reference. The, for your reference, the, there was a decision that was made at 25515, which is actually located just kitty-corner to the southwest of the subject property. As you can see, they're highlighted in yellow at the end of Helen Trail, just to the southwest. And that, the county commission, the decision was upheld, the planning commission's decision to approve that Conditional Use Permit was upheld, and that property itself was approved to allow 3,584 square feet, and the county commission approved that at the August 15th meeting. Just going through some of that. Getting back to just some of the analysis that we go through in reviewing these Conditional Use Permit applications, and some of the things that we go through is like the effect upon the use of the property to other adjacent properties in the immediate vicinity and upon property values. A lot of the properties in the vicinity are, I'm back, skip backward here, similar, there's different lot sizes in the area, and there's also similar lot sizes that have about five, six-acre parcels, with smaller lots that are half-acre, or acre lot sizes. So likely, there's no impact with the use, the proposed use of the building for the applicant's personal storage of horses for their own use and different vehicle, or vehicles. The effect upon the normal and orderly development of the, the surrounding area, on the, what's already there, for the uses that are there currently. As you can see on the map there, there is, to the, the immediate south, there's another residential site, which is vacant on the property. And, to the immediate north, you have those smaller, approximately one-acre lot sizes that are situated along 255th Street, if going east and west from that subject property. And, as well as the surrounding area, you have agricultural with the residential acreages in the area. Three, the utilities, access roads and drainage and other necessary facilities are provided. The, the petitioner is providing access, and skip forward. Um, just going back. So the, the site plan here shows that the building itself will be located on the property. Skip forward there. So, going back to this map, thought the, the concept plan was included in there. So if you see on Helen Trail, the property right in the middle there is going to be the proposed driveway. It'll extend straight east of the property. The house is proposed to be located, there is no house there now, right in the middle of the lot. And the building itself, staying down right where this white box, the end of the white box is, that's where the proposed building would be located. And, skipping forward to this next map, which actually shows in better detail of the lot itself, the building would be located, this is a contour map, so it shows the, the natural topography of the site, and how water would flow across the property. And I'll progress through that, in showing some of the images that I took of the site in my analysis. But the building would be located right here where this red dot is on the map. So, it's, it's likely that most of the drainage would go north and south of the property. So, you can see these, these valleys right here. The images will give you a better view of that, but flowed north and then as well as this way, because a lot of those, those are valleys. So, water would run straight northwest and northeast.
David, those marks, are they one-foot difference?
They are, four-foot contour map, so they're four-foot intervals.
Four-foot drop-off, okay.
Drop-offs. Yeah. And then, as well as the property would, or the water would run to the south as well, because this also goes down to the south. Just going through some of the, the pictures that I took of the property, as you can see, this is looking straight down that driveway, as you saw, splits the property in half, straight down the middle. The house would be, there's kind of a little dirt pile there. You can see that mowed down. And then, the building would be located just to the right of that image, with a little bit of separation between the house and, the petitioner noted a dog run between the house and the building. This is looking up Helen Trail from the beginning of the property, the subject property, to the, the north side of the subject property. There's an existing house to the right of the image. And right now, there are currently two houses on Helen Trail. This is looking south, this is down what would be the, the ditch, looking on the, this is on the east side of Helen Trail, so looking down towards 255th Street and the adjacent properties. This is looking from that, that northwest corner of the subject property, so you get a little bit of the feel of seeing that, that valley where the water, the topography and the land. There's an existing berm that was installed right along the, the property line, with a culvert in it, as you can see, sorry, about 12 inches. This is looking north towards 255th Street. This is the existing, it's an existing public road, dedicated 66-foot wide right-of-way that was about 300 feet long between the subject property and 255th Street. And, this is looking towards Helen Trail, or, excuse me, this is looking from 255th Street, along that roadway dedication, and then 255th Street, you can see that right there. A lot of the issues, things like park, or off-street parking, this is a residential use, so there's only personal storage involved. There's no commercial or any business activities that are involved on the property. Other things taken care of, like, things that would emit fumes, dust, noise, other vibrations, or lighting. Staff would suggest that any lighting be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent any spillage of light off the property, any nuisances that would arise to surrounding properties in, in the area. The other one is the effect upon the health, safety, general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, this, this, the property is primarily located in an area that is surrounded with agricultural land, farmland, with residential acreages of varying sizes, one to six, seven acre parcels, with different building sizes, and the different total accessory building sizes in the area. This area is identified as, it's not, is located within agricultural production area, which is outside of any of the transition or rural service areas. As I mentioned, this area is primarily farmland. And, and the, the goal of the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan is to, to help ensure that there's compatib, compatibility and functional relationships between properties in, in the immediate area, as well as with other cities, counties, and townships. This area, so staff, recommendation, staff finds that the total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the properties in the area, the, the lot sizes and the total, as well as the total accessory building sizes. So staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1756 with the following conditions. One, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 2,624 square feet. Two, that the accessory building size shall not exceed 35 feet in height. Three, that the building shall be an accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. Four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed at any time. Five, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and, and fully shielded design to, to emit, to keep, or light from spilling off the property boundaries. Six, the building permit is required prior to construction of the accessory building. And, seven is, is pertaining to the berm that's on the northwest side of the property, that that be retained on the subject property to control any drainage from the site. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. Oh, and, these are just some of the buildings that, building sizes in the area that I took a picture of, just cycling through.
David, do you know how many more building eligibilities there are in the Holbeck subdivision?
There are, not counting this one, there's one other.
Okay.
Building eligibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. We will have, is the petitioner here, and would he or she approach the podium, please?
Hello? I'm Nathan Opitz. My current address is 4707 South Tribby Trail in Sioux Falls.
And, anything special you would like to tell us?
No. Again, excited to be building our home in this area. It's a beautiful area. I know you're probably going to hear some concern about drainage in this area. I'm kind of aware of, of some of those concerns. You know, my wife and I, we really tried to think about this and, and really take some of that into consideration. You know, we, we thought through that land carefully and how we put the home in the middle of the property. It costs money to do that, you know, piping more water, gas, electrical. We thought carefully about where to put the outbuilding, which is, you know, to the south of the property. And actually, you know, as we thought about it a little more, I know, we saw some of the, the flow diagrams there, it's actually staked about 20 feet back from the house, so, really think a lot of the, the drainage concerns, a lot of that water is going to be, you know, mitigated down to the, to the east, southeast, and northeast of the property. So, other than that, if you have any other questions about, for me?
Okay. Anyone have questions for the petitioner?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this proposal or this item agenda? Okay, approach the podium and clarify your name and address.
Tony Lee, 47563 255th Street. So, I reside right here? No? There we go.
Right there. Yep.
Right there. So, I, excuse me. To be honest with you, I'm asking for this to be tabled until further research into the Holbeck Development Plan can be done. Because when you look at, in September of 2008, when the CUP had been approved with, by the commission, there were several stipulations put on that condition. And, it's been identified that not all of those conditions have been met. And I finally got word back from the state that, no, there was no stormwater management program submitted to the state. So, there, there was just, there's three particular, and I don't have that letter in front of me, I was in a rush from work, I apologize, but I have submitted that to Planning and Zoning. They have a copy of my letter stating those differences. So again, I'm not opposed to new neighbors. I am asking, though, that this be done tastefully, and that the rules be followed, that the Holbeck addition really should be suspended until it is brought up to the requirements that were put on the Conditional Use Permit. The stormwater management's huge. My house has flooded twice, okay? The ditches are not to the development plan, the development subdivision, subdivision ordinance. The road hasn't been put in to meet these requirements. This requires 18-inch culverts, okay? The culverts that are right in front of my house are 12-inch culverts, okay? Because this is develop happened, I mean, the road has flooded last spring, I submitted those pictures. So, again, I'm asking it to be tabled. I'm not asking it for approval or denial. I'm asking that there be further research done into the Holbeck Development Plan, and that even it be the other pole shed or the 3,600-square-foot permit be revoked until this, the plan is brought up to speed and honored by the 2008 CUP that was approved.
Okay. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the floor? If not, the floor is closed, and we will discuss this item as a planning commission.
Madam Chair, you know, the, the fact is that there is a process that can bring this for further review, I think, on the 26th of September. And, you know, and then there's other steps that can take, be taken beyond that. So, at this point, I would make a motion to approve this Conditional Use Permit 17-56, and pending at least an appeal to the county commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
I, I think I would just say that if there are concerns with the development itself, it seems like those would be separate from this actual project, or this, this house. I mean, just based on the area and what's been approved, and trying to stay consistent with the other buildings, it seems like it fits all of those criteria as we discussed earlier. So with that, I guess those would be my comments to your motions.
Okay. Any other discussion? Although, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. This permit is approved. We will now move on to item five, Conditional Use Permit 17-57. The petitioner is Ralph Tushin, and I will hear our staff report from David.
Good evening, Planning Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. Conditional Use Permit, item number five, Conditional Use Permit 17-57 is to allow a contractor shop, repair and taxidermy, and outdoor storage. This, the property is just located about two miles southeast of the city of Hartford, just south of I-90, and south of Highway 38, as you can see there, outlined in red. Property continues along, along 260, or, 261st Street, right there. You continue east, the road's right there, property. This is a indication of the plat, as you can see. The property to the right of the hashed-out area, which will end up being a proposed mutual access easement to access the two, this is a proposed plat. The property, or the petitioner's request to allow the, the business use is to the right of that road, on tract two, on that image. Continuing forward, zooming in on the, the site plan itself, the petitioner has proposed one building to be located on the southeast part of the lot, as well as two, two storage buildings to be located just to the northwest of that, and, in addition to outdoor storage on the property. So, both uses on the property, so just for a reference, this is zoned I-1 Light Industrial. The petitioner is required to obtain Conditional Use Permit approval, because there's outdoor storage on the property. Outdoor storage is not a permitted use in the Light Industrial District in the county, in the zoning ordinance. The, so, just by general uses, the diesel truck repair and taxidermy business with outdoor storage requires a Conditional Use Permit. And, the, the other buildings would be used for just personal storage, the applicant has explained. The, so skipping forward, and giving you kind of a, a surrounding view, this is the zoning map for the area. As you can see, the green area is zoned Recreation Conservation District, which, as you may recall, there is a gravel quarry there to the southeast. And, this property is located within that Light Industrial area, the light purple. And, to the north of that, along 38, you have, I'm thinking Buffalo, Buffalo Trading, or, commercial area there, Buffalo Ridge, I couldn't think of that, thank you. There is, or, just going through some of the uses that are already in the area, the Conditional Use Permit criteria identifies the effect on surrounding land uses in the area. The, the purple area that this, the red hashed-out area that I've outlined for the, where the site plan indicates that this property will be, their proposed plat, is vacant. It's, right now, it's just agriculture on the property. And the area to the west of that, as you can see, right along the road there, 466th Avenue, there's an existing, that was, or existing business that was approved for a concrete precast plant.
Where is that exactly?
Right on the corner, if you can show, I should point to it.
Right there?
So it's right here, is the concrete precast plant that was approved in 2013. And, this is vacant as well, this is a vacant parcel of land, is zoned for commercial.
So, red is commercial, pink is light industrial?
Yes. And then, basically, just gone through that. This is a contour map, as you see, there's a little bit of an indication in the, about just the natural topography in the area. Most of it runs, as you can see, to the right of this image, is Skunk Creek, which is, here's the flood plain right here, indicated on the map. A lot of the, the contours drain to the east and to the south, right along that road towards the gravel quarry. Everything slopes downhill from 466th Avenue, which would drain across this property. So, and just, staff reached out to, and getting back to the, the effect upon the normal and orderly development in the area, because this, this is located in an area that's within the transition area for the city of Hartford, as identified by the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And, Hartford, the planning commission expressed no concerns about the proposed use of the So, one of the things that, just going through some of the pictures that I took of the site, and, and just giving you an overview of the site itself, it's difficult to tell, the, the topography of the land, if you can just see the corn, but I did take a few pictures of the road, that private road access that takes you all the way to the gravel quarry that's located to the southeast of this property. This is looking at that site of where that is, the property, vicinity. This is looking towards, looking to the east, towards that entrance to the gravel quarry. And, there is, it's not immediately adjacent to the property, but there are a few residences located to the east of the property, about a couple hundred feet, just along this tree line. And, zoom forward here, this is looking back west. As you can see, this looks uphill. Here's that concrete precast plant in the background, this big building, located off in the distance, on 466th Avenue. This is a close-up view of that tree line, residence in the, on the other side of that line, to the east of the trees. Looking at the gravel quarry, and this is looking, again, just coming down that hill, and seeing the, the full picture view of the site and the surroundings. As you can see, just noted a few things as far as the drainage, water running down the hill, down the road, looking over that hill is towards 466th Avenue. The sign, I took a picture of this, sign is for the, the gravel quarry, the trucks are to go towards, south of, go to Highway 38, State Highway 38. This is the precast plant, and one of the things that the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan highlights with the environmental stewardship section, is that development should not be allowed prior to completion of a drainage plan. Just wanted to highlight one of the things that other properties in the immediate vicinity are, are doing on their site. Just wanted to highlight one of the things that other properties in the immediate vicinity are, are doing on their site. Since this site, subject property is pretty close to a couple, or about almost seven acres. So there's a significant amount of land area that's being disturbed. So one of the things that the plan should identify is the natural drainage corridors in the area, which is something that this detention pond has identified because the water does drain down that hill towards other properties. So it's one of the things that other properties in the immediate vicinity should take in, into consideration when they're planning their sites because they would have to get Department of Environment and Natural Resource approval for sites disturbing more than one acre of land. Which could include things like using it for aesthetics, open space, and other hydrologic and ecological purposes for wildlife or controlling the drainage on the site, as this is approving a pretty large building. This is looking, this is four sixty-sixth Avenue. As you can see, the no truck sign, took a picture of that, looking south towards what is known as South Dakota State Highway forty-two, which is about four miles south. Off to the right, you have the precast plant. And looking north on four sixty-sixth Avenue, this is a gravel intersection. So the pavement doesn't extend all the way to gravel. Road off to the right, Highway thirty-eight, as everybody, you know. And then looking at the, the commercial areas to the left and then the agricultural areas to the right that are zoned for commercial uses. So staff, staff recommends, or finds that the proposed use is compatible with the zoning ordinance and the envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen dash fifty-seven with the following conditions. One, that conditional use permit seventeen dash fifty-seven shall allow a contractor shop and storage yard, diesel truck, repair and taxidermy shop. Two, that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan dated seven twenty-five, two thousand seventeen. Three, that all signage shall be in conformance with Article sixteen and seventeen of the zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. That a building permit is required for any sign, installation of signage. Four, that the, the applicant be required to submit a commercial set of plans for, prior to approval of any of the buildings on the property. Five, that the applicant shall provide a ninety percent opaque screening fence around the outdoor storage area in order to not let visibility through that fence. Six, that a stormwater pollution prevention plan and soil erosion and sediment control plan be submitted for review and approval to the planning director prior to construction. Seven, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. Eight, that the planning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the contractor shop and storage yard, diesel truck, repair and taxidermy shop at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval in the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. So I'll answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
Madam Chair, so the condition of that road, we, when we reapproved that gravel pit, we asked them to keep that asphalt up on that road, is that road in shape at this point?
It, it appears to be, as you see from the image, it doesn't, it, it's in shape at the moment, but it, there's not much breaking down or anything.
There's not much what?
Not much breaking down or anything, it's not, South Dakota State Highway thirty-eight.
This applicant will be using road beyond where the pavement ends, is this the story?
So this is where the pavement ends, this intersection.
Turns off to go to the gravel pit off to the right, is that?
Yep, this is gravel and then this is gravel.
Although I've been there, it seems more like mud to me. And the, the applicant though will be further south then?
No.
He's going to be north and then?
Just down the, to the east.
Okay. So he'll be on the left looking at this picture, right?
On the right.
Right.
On the right.
Behind?
To the east.
Behind the concrete place?
To the east of the concrete precast plant. About a quarter mile.
Thanks.
To the east.
Any other questions? Okay, is the petitioner here? Step forward and state your name and address.
Ralph Tushen, four five seven four nine, two hundred and sixty-second Street, Humboldt, South Dakota. And to answer your question about the pavement, they put a new mat on it this year. I went by there as they were putting it on, so there has been a new mat put on it, as conditions I believe they had. When I was looking at this property, tract one, I believe Carlson's, according to Gary Har, Carlson's have purchased tract one or are in the process of it. I'm not sure if it's a done deal yet or not, I just closed on mine last week. I've been dealing with the county, with Scott and these guys since we started this process to make sure that what we were wanting to do out there should be permissible with, with the guidelines they set up. And the guidelines that they've set up, I knew they were coming and I, I can accept what they are suggesting. I don't know what the concerns are going to be, I'm, I'm curious to hear what my neighbors have, you know, are concerned. After that maybe, if you got any questions.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would, who would like to speak to this agenda item? Approach the podium and give your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Devin Howard, I live at four six six four five, Highway thirty-eight. If you look at the map here, it's just the east of the subject property. It is that Idaho-shaped cutout there. So that's where we reside currently and have for the last two years. We really like our property as it sits right now. We have a quarry behind us that we have never had any issues with besides a little dust during the summertime when it's dry. And the, if you went to my front yard right now and looked west, you cannot see the concrete plant because of the corn. We've always appreciated the seclusion that we have there. I am not personally, and neither is my wife, against any kind of growth around us. But what I'm really concerned about is our property value. I've put over three hundred thousand dollars into that five acres and the house that's on it. And I do not want to lose that because somebody puts a storage unit next to my home. There's not enough gap there to, to provide any kind of screen for that. And then you talk about the waterways, I have a culvert that cuts right through the middle of my driveway where that field dumps a lot of water into Skunk Creek. And so I have concerns about any kind of contamination from the diesel shop or just the storage unit itself, just to have that there.
Or the taxidermy, I mean, there's a lot of chemicals used in the taxidermy.
You know, I, like I said, right now I don't have any neighbors. You have to cross the creek to get to my nearest neighbor or cross Highway thirty-eight. I am concerned about the storage unit being put in there where I'm going to have an uncontrolled amount of strangers coming right adjacent to my property. We moved out of town to get away from that. You know, I am ultimately flexible, I was taken off guard whenever the letter came in. So I mean, I would, I'd be happy to work with Ralph and his, you know, the rest of his group on options that we have for that, because I do know that Hartford's growing. But I also know when I bought that property, I bought it as an investment property because Sioux Falls is growing in that direction as well. We've built the Walmart out there on Sixtieth, it's just right up the hill from me. If you look farther east from me, there's housing up the hill and on top of the hill. And that area is just growing. And I would like to see it grow into that region for my own personal welfare because at some point when my kids are out of school and have graduated from West Central and moved on and my wife and I decide that we don't want a two-story house and five acres to take care of every day, then I can recoup what I've put into it. So, thank you for your consideration, I would request that this be denied now or that we come to some other solution.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Devin, do you see that, any areas where things could be made better for you working with your proposed neighbor here? I mean, is there something with drainage, something with screening, something with anything that might make it more palatable?
Well, I know there's no guarantee that anything we do to it is going to, you know, maintain property value. That's not something that's, you know, besides just a natural growth. I didn't know where it was going to be at on the property until tonight because the letter I got just said it was going to be adjacent, did not say that it were, you know, location.
This is the picture we received.
Yeah.
In that entire, in the entirety.
So, can somebody run it back to the location, or I guess you can?
So, we are, you can see our property line right there.
Yeah. And I, you know, I can't tell from that map, just a short view of what the distance is from there. Okay, you know.
I mean, this is, the quarry uses that road quite a bit. I'm, I know they put some top on it, it's not a good top, it's a, it's a pretty nasty looking road.
Quarry road's pretty nasty.
Again, when we bought the property, we didn't mind the quarry, the quarry is actually moving away from our house, which is why we didn't have any issues with the conditional use permit when they renewed it in January. We planned to be on this property for ten years, they were requesting another ten years to move away. It kept neighbors from us, it kept us isolated like we wanted. They can't build on the other side of the creek, it's all flood plain. So, and, and we assumed that this would all be industrial. We do have major issues with that concrete plant, there's a lot of litter. I'm very concerned that there will be issues with anybody that builds additional industrial buildings here, with, with trash, with, with, you know, chemicals, whatever the case may be. We run a small hobby farm, we
We raise animals and
We raise animals.
Vegetables for our own consumption right there on that property.
And so it's a concern to me, to the welfare of our, of our property, to the, the health and wealth, welfare of our animals, my children. We have an orchard that we have established, all of, you know, so putting all of this in is, is a major concern for us.
And I, I'm sure that we could, some kind of screen or something could be put up between. But I just don't know if it's going to be enough to cover up the other issues that I've got with it and the people that I'm going to be trying to draw in from either Sioux Falls or Hartford to look at my property when I put a for sale sign at the end of the road.
Because as of right now, it's, it's ideal, I mean, we are a straight shot town. I work for a major corporation in town, it takes me eight minutes to get into work. The kinds of people that, that we are and the kinds of people we want to be able to attract in the future to buy our property, they're going to want that seclusion and the peace of mind that we currently have. And when we put in all of these industrial buildings, that is going to go away.
Well, you make a good case, Madam Chair. I, I would say, you know, you are sitting on a goldmine in the sense when that gravel pit is done, it's going to probably be a residential development on a lake-filled golf course. And people are going to be wanting to live in that area. At the same time, you saw the map showing that the areas that are industrial or light industrial. And it you know, the intersection of an interstate highway and a major state highway is not going to stay a museum, it's going to change.
Correct.
And, you know, you will probably get a Burger King and a Super eight there in no time. So change happens and that's, that's what goes on, but I do appreciate your points there.
And we do have houses directly across the street from us, there are two residents aside from the
Yeah, we're not the only
We're not the only homes there, yeah, there are two homes directly across the street.
To the north, you mean?
To the north of us, right.
Yep, I know those guys.
Right here and right here, yeah, both, they're, they're great people. And yes, they own the cowboy town. But you know, th- those are homes and yes, they have a buffalo farm and then they have a tourist trap that
Sheldon Songstad and his brother, yeah.
Like I said, you know, we would talked about anything, but, you know, I don't have time to sit and negotiate with anybody right now at a podium.
Right, no, that would be not the right place to negotiate.
I'd like to have the opportunity to sit down with Ralph and grab a cup of coffee or something and talk about this before something is decided. You know, we would sell our property to what we have in it, to what we bought it for, if that's something that he'd be agreeable to. We'd look at any kind of easement options to get that concealed as best as possible. You know, just, I'm open, I just don't want to lose the money that I've invested.
Scott, you had a point of clarification.
Make a couple things clear, so if I could just, so everyone can hear me. So really, I want to make sure we all understand that the proposed use of the storage units and the taxidermy shop and the contractor yard, those are all permitted by right. We're not, that's not a discussion tonight, the only thing you're discussing tonight is allowing outdoor storage. So as part of his request for his storage units, he would like outdoor storage. So if that is denied tonight, he can come and get building permits to construct all these buildings. He just would not be allowed to have any outdoor storage.
And I wanted to clarify, I understood that this outdoor storage was for his, the businesses and not outdoor storage units that he rents out to other people. So I'll have to have clarification on that. Go ahead, do you have any other comments that you'd like to make?
Nope, I was just waiting for any more follow-up questions.
Do you have more questions?
Let's have the proponent come back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ralph, if, if we were to permit the operation without the outdoor storage, would that grievously impair going forward? Perhaps you'd be able to negotiate something with the neighbor that would make it easier for you to be there. Five hundred and some feet is quite a distance. I think that's
It's a long distance and they suggested a six to seven foot privacy fence around at the height, anything that would look out of place. The outside storage that I'm really thinking of is just basically camper parking or, you know, semi-parking. If people, since that's a semi diesel shop, there's people that want to park a semi there. And that's basic, I mean, I'm not looking to put a bunch of junk in there.
Yeah, we
I don't, I don't want, you know, junk.
Goose RV place across the street there too.
Yep, there's an RV place that parks them already and
No, it's across the interstate.
You know, when I, when I bought, you know, looked at it, it was light industrial and, like I said, I worked, I've been down county office more than once and, and looked at what the permissible uses were and the way I read all the rules, that's, there wasn't nothing that was non-permissible there. No, like you said, five hundred and twenty-six feet is a long ways and if Carlson does what I think he's going to do with that other part, it's going to be worse on the other side of me than it is on this side.
Maybe to be clear, Scott, you had said everything on this is a permitted use in light industrial, right? Except for outdoor storage.
In, in order for him to have outdoor storage, he has to have a conditional use permit. But otherwise, the, the storage units, that's a permitted use in light industrial. His contractor's shop, it's a permitted use in the, in the, uh, light industrial industry.
Come back on up.
Yeah, come back to the mic. No, we need to have you at the mic, so
We're recording this.
We record it.
My, my question on that, on the usage of the buildings would be, these are what we're saying they're going to be established at on day one. When the diesel shop decides to close and move somewhere, what am I going to have to live with going back into that building? You know, I, I don't have any control over that and neither will you, except I'll have to live with it.
It's controlled by the zoning ordinance. It's zoned I-one light industrial, so any uses that are allowed could go in there.
Okay. Yeah, what's Carlson doing? What's Carlson doing?
Okay, we need to have the discussion here with us and not between members of the audience, so. Did anyone else from the commission have a question?
I'd just like to have suggestion, not that they're a cure to everything, is there any possibilities? Some rows of trees could be planted just to shield the view and it'll help dissipate any sound.
You, you could certainly require a landscaping buffer along the east, along his east property line as part of the outdoor storage requirements and you can specify what kind of trees you want. Or you can, you know, indicate that the planning director has to has to approve that. I'm always hesitant, and, and I've had this discussion with Ralph, is oftentimes screening, if you, if you solely rely on trees for screening, they don't often work that great, because they're busy running their businesses and not necessarily worrying about the, the, the life of those trees. And so, sometimes they don't grow as well, they get neglected and die, and then it, it just doesn't screen much. So, trees for screening sometimes don't work that great. So that's why I prefer a fence that has, you know, slats, or some kind of a solid wood fence or something.
Well, and I, if I may, I've also heard trees causing troubles for neighbors who think they're shading their crops, and they don't want tall trees shading their cornfield. But I, I think, Doug, that's a, that's a good point. I, I think that there probably are some things that could be done that might make it easier, but I think Ralph has got a plan that he should be able to go forward with. And if there's another condition that we need to do, I'm not sure exactly what it is. I worry a little bit about legislating on the fly, sitting here making a decision for you guys. You know, what if we, what if we allowed it to go forward and brought the storage part back in another month without, you know, to allow some time to negotiate? Would that be palatable?
Bring the outdoor storage back?
Bring outdoor storage back in a month with the time that you and Devin could chat about, and Megan could chat about...
Outdoor storage ain't going to be until next summer, anyway. I mean, I already, I ain't going to do my fence till next year, so...
Scott, would that work?
Yeah, I, they can, we can continue this a month, and they can discuss it, and we can have this discussion, we can bring it back for discussion and...
So would you be breaking ground, Ralph, within the next?
Well, that's what I want to do, is be break, get, starting the groundwork for this...
Buildings.
One building that I want to put up yet this fall, which is the diesel shop. I'm not going to break ground for that, you know, which, I don't believe there's going to be any outdoor storage going forward at that right away.
Devin, what do you think?
I mean, if, if it's zoned for that, I don't really have a lot to stand on there. I mean, that's, but, I mean, I would appreciate some concessions about screening or something above and beyond a chain link fence, or something like that, because that's not going to add to my property value at all.
So maybe, sorry, to that point, maybe, maybe we're better off in your case, Ralph, at this point, to give you some time to work with Devin. Maybe we table the conditional use part, because then you can get started, and there's no conditional use that's out there. I guess this kind of bouncing us off the commission. If we table that for now, now it's not denied. It doesn't have a, a time limit when you can come in, or you don't have to appeal to, to have it be heard. Come back in at a later time, give you guys some time to maybe work together on what a buffer might be. And then you can always come back in the future when the, the conditional use part for the outdoor storage actually even counts for you, and you can get started on the project, because it's a permitted use anyway. I mean, does that sound sensible to you?
But you would give me the right to build this shop going forward now.
That's permitted either way. So if we table this, you can do everything except for outdoor storage, leaving here tonight. Correct, Scott, or whatever he's got left to file with you, because it's permitted use.
Or maybe just continue it for one month or two months.
Or bring it back after you guys have had a chance to work together when...
So do we have to reapply for this conditional use permit then, or?
No, we table it, no, correct?
We can continue it for one month.
Continue it.
It's not a new application fee or anything?
Yeah, I have no problem something with him if we can come up with something. I mean, that's, that's what neighbors are for. I mean, I, I want to work with him. I bought the property to do what I want to do with these in plans, but I also got to get along with the neighbors, too. It's easier to shake hands than it is to throw fists, so. It's a lot better at the end, so, I mean, I got, I got no problem with that.
Okay.
You know, as long as, as long as I can break ground in this building, because I'd like to have the concrete poured before the snow flies.
Well, and if, on the flip side, if this was approved tonight, and it turned into an appeal situation, or battle over the outdoor storage...
Right.
Then, that might keep you from wanting to do anything.
Yeah, no, as I said, we can, you know...
Give you guys a chance.
Well, the outdoor storage ain't going to stop me, or stop the diesel shop and the storage units, anyway. It would just stop my outside storage, which I had planned on being a fair part of this project, but I've, I've seen other things go bad before, too, so, but, you know, I'd like to work, I mean, I'd like to work with him.
We make a motion to defer action on the conditional use.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. You may be seated.
I would second Jeff's motion to defer.
Okay. Would you repeat that again, Jeff? I'm sure they got it.
Make a motion to defer action on the conditional use.
All right, and you seconded?
Second.
Discussion?
I think that's the best option here, because the applicant can begin work, which is a seasonal issue, and work with his neighbor positively to get the project done in a mutually acceptable way.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of continuing this for one month?
Continue it for one month.
One month.
One month, yeah.
That's not to say we couldn't continue it more months.
We could continue it, too, if, is one month...
We continue it until Ralph plans, until he chooses to ring a bell. Can't do that.
Have to have a date.
One month?
Let's go one month.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of continuing this for one month?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are now to get to the front of my paper, to the regular agenda. And I think there's nothing on it, if I remember correctly.
We passed our, we, we should discuss, we, we passed the changes on our planning and zoning for aquaculture and concentrated animal operations.
Well, I was going to say, we sort of passed it. Then they said to, for it to come back to you folks for...
No, no.
Well, yeah, the, the changes were, were adopted, and they become effective the 12th of September. They would like us to continue working on some amendments. Jeff was there, of course, and Becky was there, and Bonnie, and Mike Cypher, and Doug Odie was there. And so, their concerns were, let me think if I can remember what they were exactly again. Let's see. Notification, they wanted some additional notification. And what was another Well...
I think notification was the big one from my memory.
Yeah.
I don't think there was a lot of discussion about setback.
No, there was not, that, that wasn't one of the items that was concern, of concern, but I think they wanted some note, some further notifications. And so, it was approved, and...
And how we, enforcement.
Oh, yeah, enforcement. But that was more a question for the D E N R, I felt. But that's not to say that Minnehaha County shouldn't be intimately involved with proactively enforcing these things if the state is having trouble. Paul, you had the D E N R come and speak to us about enforcement. And I think, I recognize you're no longer so connected with those folks, but...
Still working.
It, it wouldn't hurt us to have an additional briefing with the regular commission on D E N R enforcement, because rumor has it, they never show up. I mean, that's just what people say.
Unfortunately, that is the rumor, yes. And, and I know they'd be happy to come meet with the commission anytime they're invited to do so. They, they do that fairly frequently, to actually explain their, their processes. They, of course, have statutes they have to follow, in terms of what they can and can't do, and when they can do stuff, and when they can't, and that sort of thing, but...
Be nice to come when there wasn't an adversarial situation ongoing.
It's a lot more productive.
So, how can we arrange that?
Anybody could invite him. I mean, if, if Scott wanted to invite him...
Scott, would you be able to?
I could as well, since I sit on the commission. Basically, if any commissioner invites him, they, they just want to know that they're invited to the county by a county official.
Okay. Get me the info, and I will invite them to our, I'll, I'll work with Carol Muller, and I'll get, yeah, and we'll get them on the agenda for the regular commission.
Absolutely. I'll be happy to do that.
Then we upheld our decision for this small acreage at the Crooks Interchange at that same meeting. Other than that, I think that's the main report.
Yep.
All right.
You did a good job, boss.
Very good, very good.
Move me adjourned.
All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment, a second?
Second, but with the comment that I'm going to Wiley's.
Oh.
It's still a second.
It's still a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work.
Sorry, I completely missed mentioning the minutes.
Oh, no.
I better double check, yeah.
Well, maybe I'll come. The doctor...